Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the December 5, 2022 Crestille City Council Meeting to order. If everyone please rise for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verchay.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kuhwal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we'll continue with the agenda items. First is the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on November 21, 2022. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
We have motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the city council meetings held on November 21, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I already asked for approval of the minutes from the work session held on November 28, 2022.
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Verchay for the approval of the minutes of the November 28, 2022 work session. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items, but fire away with any questions.
Any questions of city attorney? All right, thank you, Mike. Our city administrator, Jim Marino. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three change orders for the city center construction work that needs your approval tonight. This was for work that was previously approved at the October 17 city council meeting. So the first one is a change order for, with Tim Electric, in the amount of $6,740.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verchay for the approval of the change order with Tim Electric Incorporated in the amount of $6,740. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And the last change order is with Metropolitan Fire Protection Incorporated in the amount of $880.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the change order with Metropolitan Fire Protection Incorporated in the amount of $880. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
The next item I have is a resolution creating an interested parties registry. As
I mentioned at the work session, staff is working with our TIF consultant Kane McKenna and our TIF attorney Dave Silverman to create the TIF district on about 75 acres of property at the northwest corner of Division and Weber Road. There are a few things that the council needs to approve as part of the process of creating this TIF district. And the first item is this resolution that creates a registry for individuals that want to receive information on the TIF district. So by passing the resolution tonight, we will publish a notice in the paper with information how people can come and put their name on the register, which is coming into the city hall, and filling out some paperwork. We'll also paste that, post that form on social media as well. So once we collect those, anybody that submits them will receive information on the TIF district as we go through the process to create the TIF. So for tonight, there's a resolution creating an interested parties registry concerning the proposed Weber Division redevelopment project area in the city of Crestille.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for a resolution creating an interested parties registry concerning the proposed Weber Division redevelopment project area in the city of Crestille. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Resolution 1161. Motion carries. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, any questions of city administrator?
I had a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Jim, regarding the city center and the appropriations ordinance that was passed for additional $750,000 for that construction project, where, where's the total, where, how much of that $750,000 approximately are we at?
Lisa would be better able to answer that.
I can tell you where we are year-to-date, but I can't tell you the change orders that have been processed against the $750,000.
We're still within that.
Yeah, okay. Being that we're, last I heard, 95% to completion and set to move in early in the year, do you foresee, I mean, any additional work that hasn't already been identified? I would think by this time, we would, we should have a good idea.
No, I'm not aware of anything else that hasn't already been identified, but as you know, something could always come up. They're still in the process of opening up some walls to put that window in, in the customer service area. I was in there today, and they were putting a whole new beam in. So it's a possibility that as they open up walls, they may uncover things they didn't anticipate, but as of now, there isn't anything else that we haven't already expected. Thank you.
Do you have any updates on how is this salary study is going, and how long it takes?
Lindsay was working on that. I don't know if you have an update?
So we were able to send out surveys to different municipalities, and that was done a week ago, and they thought that they would have those results back to us compiled in about a month. So that was their timeline. So hopefully in three weeks, we'll have something.
Then it's a holiday, so probably we're not going to do anything until mid-January.
Right.
I just want, would like this to be processed since more and more people are leaving, and I'm just afraid that we're going to have more staff.
Understood.
Yeah.
As soon as it was turned over to us, we made sure we were, got on it right away. And so it's in process? And we'll bring the results to you soon as we can.
All right, thank you.
Could we have an update on the Economic Development Director position that we're in the process of filling?
We're conducting second round interviews this week. There's three finalists. I'll be bringing those to you next Monday. All three candidates will be here at the meeting next Monday.
At the work session?
Yes.
Okay. Could we have as a part of that work session, prior to the work session, their credentials and resumes and cover letters and, thank you.
We will be having the IT on the agenda soon?
Yes, and we'll have it on next week's agenda as well.
Yeah, and since, I just want to bring a quick thing on that. Just a clarification. What I meant in that meeting is, we do need an IT, but I prefer an IT company that we have to look into in case they, they leave, we have a backup. That's what I meant. I never said we don't need an IT.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Jim. Moving on to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mark Seifert. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items. I'd just like to give some thank yous from two events we had over the last week. First of all, on Tuesday, the 29th, we had the groundbreaking for the West Sioux Shurin Plan. I want to thank Alderperson, Alderman Jefferson, Alderwoman Gazal, Alderperson Oberlin for their attendance, along with Mayor Solomon. Staff is very excited that we were able to break ground and get moving on this project. It's a long time coming, and we are, we're excited to see some earth finally start moving after the first of the year. And then also, I want to thank all the residents, along with Treasure Conklin, Alderperson, Alderman Verchay, Alderman Jefferson, Alderwoman Gazal, and Alderman Albert, and then City Clerk Verchay Hall next to me here, for their participation in the Christmas, or the holiday parade on Saturday. It's great to see all the residents' smiling faces as we pass by. Santa was great to be seen by all. So just want to say thank you to everyone who helped participate in those two events.
Well, Mark, I want to say thank you to you and your staff for organizing all that and putting all that together. I mean, that's a lot of work to get all that, you know. I know that. And of course, the hard hats were nice, too. Thank you.
Mark, I want to thank you for your leadership. I'm going to call you leadership because you are a leadership in the city. You have shown so much work and so much effort. What I saw, the details on the parade, that took a lot of work and a lot of creative. I am just impressed with our staff, how creative they are.
Thank you. I will pass on.
And you guys have gone above and beyond, and made our city shine on, on Saturday. So I want to thank you. You know that from the bottom of my heart, not just to you, to Blaine and all the staff.
We have some very great guys.
Every person that helped in this parade, it was amazing. And of course, to our police department and the Lions, Crestille, I mean, everyone participated. It was a fun, long, long event, but it was a lot of fun. And I want to thank you. And also, you know, the resident that she, she was in an accident, and she was paralyzed. You made her day. I sent you her message, and you brought Christmas to her. That's what she said. We brought Christmas to her because she can't see any of the events, and she was out there in her wheelchair. Three months in the hospital she was, and that was the first thing she saw when she came home. So that, that made it worse, like the four hours, right? So thank you again.
Yeah, I agree, Mark. We had a great time, as usual. On the way back, we weren't even back to Public Works yet, and I had received a phone call from, resident from Linwood Street that was very appreciative of all of the, all the participation, all the hard work that went into it. So thanks to you and Blaine and all the, all the guys and gals that put it all together. Thank you.
And Santa, don't forget Santa.
I'd just like to say thank you, Mark, to you and Chief Clark and everybody involved in putting that together. It was a super event. I saw a lot of smiling faces, mine included.
Just we forget to pack food for next time.
Yeah, next time we box lunches.
I'd like to, I know I'm not counsel, but I'd like to extend a special thank you to Sam Chalino, who was an absolute Superman out there for four hours.
Yeah.
In the cold. And also to Mrs. Albert for her providing our halfway point stop.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that it's very important everybody knew that was about the halfway point, so.
It was a good spot. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark.
It was a happy day out there Saturday. A little fresh wind blowing in the windows, but it was fun. The only time they get to throw anything at a police officer, can't afford candy.
Okay, moving on to our city engineer. We have nothing on the agenda. He will be here tomorrow. Community development, we have nothing. Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening, but you have your two-week informational packet, and I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions of Police Department?
Chief, a couple of meetings ago, I think I brought, made comment about a safety concern that I had, that a resident brought to my attention.
Yep.
I was wondering if it given any thought or any more, do you have any input on that?
Yeah, I'm going to go look at that intersection. I haven't made it up there yet, but I also did send the clerks, obviously I sent Deputy Clerk Karen to put it on the agenda, so we'll have it set up. If it's not going to be this next meeting, maybe we'll get it the first one in January that we can discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report, the agenda item is the appointment of a building commissioner. We have Mr. Don Seaman in the audience this evening. We met with him as a city council last Monday night, November 28. After conducting all of the interviews, Don was the most qualified candidate for the position. He has 35 years with Pepper Construction as a superintendent of projects and a construction manager. I think he is qualified to become our building commissioner, and as I said, we had spoken about him last Monday night, so I would ask for a motion for his approval.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Kuhwal for the appointment of Don Seaman to the position of building commissioner for the city of Crestille. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin?
No.
Mark Sapidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
No.
John Verchay?
No.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations to you, Don, if you'd like to come to the podium, and any comments you'd certainly like to make?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council, Mr. Marino, for the opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you, getting to know everybody, get to know me, and working for the citizens of Crestille, making building department the best it can be. I appreciate it.
And start date would be mid-January, correct?
January 16.
January 16, 2023.
Welcome aboard, Doug.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, just a couple announcements from the mayor. Last Thursday, December 1st, I attended the open house and ribbon cutting at 3PT. That is, stands for three-point therapy, which is located at 1695 Plainfield Road. It was the old Title Mac store. The three-point therapy is, they do mostly physical therapy, but they also do behavioral therapy and nutritional therapy all at the same place. I will tell you that the building was in some disrepair. They have done a wonderful job. It looks fantastic inside. They had about 50 to 60 people present. This is his sixth establishment. I know they have one in Bourbon A, they have one in Mokina, I believe Oak Lawn, and I'm not, I don't remember the other two, but we are the sixth one for him as a family. And I would tell you, a lot of his employees were there. They gave him a lot of respect during the, the evening that I spent with them there. They had some wonderful food that was catered in by Thayer's, Thayer Brothers' Restaurant, and actually both Rick and Tom Thayer were also present at the, at the establishment. So we welcomed him to the city of Crestille. I'm sure he's going to be here for a business promotion in the very near future. So I just want to thank Freddie Wallner, who is the owner of the, of the business, and I wish him much success in the city of Crestille for years to come. I also would like to thank Mark Seifert and Public Works, and especially Dan Kubon, for the beautiful and festive decorations that we have outside of City Hall here that was put on the day after Thanksgiving on November 29th, or 5th, I think it was 5th, yeah. And also to Lori Thrasher, who decorated this whole council room chambers with all the decorations and the hallway and foyer outside. So thank you to her also for all the, all the work for the decorations that were done. With that, I will try to answer any questions that anybody has of the mayor. Hearing none, we'll move on to the city clerk's report. Our city clerk, Christine Verchay Hall.
Thank you, and I have nothing to report tonight.
Any questions of city clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. Moving on to city administrator, or city treasurer. Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have three items to address under the approval of the annual tax levy, two being abating or abatements, and one being the recommendation of approved ordinance. At this point, I'm going to turn over to our Director of Finance, Lisa Benavides, for the, for the tax levy for 2023.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. So this evening, we're going to be seeking approval of the tax levy as presented at the November 14 work session in the amount of $2,465,638. The requested amount is 4.99% more than what the city received in the prior year. The city is in compliance with the truth, with, I'm sorry, the property tax extension limitation law, which means that the city is able to levy the lesser of CPI, which was 7% this year, or 5%. So we're going to be levying 4.99. So are there any questions related to what was presented at the November 14 work session related to the levy? No questions? Okay, so we can move on then to approving the ordinances, if that's okay. Glenn, do you want to read them?
I'd ask for a motion for approval, please.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Sapidi. This is for an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year ending May 1, 2023, ending April 30, 2024, for the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Ordinance 1936.
So then there are two additional ordinances, and those will be abating the principal and interest on the general obligation bonds, which means that the city will be paying those payments and not passing those on to the taxpayers? So do you want me to read the first ordinance, or?
I would.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Treasurer. So the first approval would be to approve an, to approve an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2022 to pay the principal and interest on general obligation refunding bonds, waterworks and sewerage system alternate revenue source, series 2019A, of the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin for an ordinance abating tax levy for the year 2022 to pay the principal of and interest on general obligation refunding, refunding bonds, series 219A, of the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
And Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1937.
And then the last approval for this section would be to approve an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2022 to pay the principal and interest on general obligation bonds, sales tax alternative revenue source, series 2019B, of the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an ordinance abating the tax levy for year 2022 to pay principal and interest on general obligation bonds, series 2019B, of the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1938.
I want to thank you all for that, and Lisa, to you in the office for your work on that. Next up, I seek your approval on our list of bills, which through December 6 of 2022, came in the amount of $412,734.33.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion for the approval of the list of bills by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson. Questions or comments?
I have a question. On page 77, item 7. IIS, we paid $39,250. I thought we can only approve 20 grand.
That's a $20,000 monthly expense. This was discussed at the previous work session, and this involves some forward-moving contracts.
So we pay before we approve it?
We pay before. In this case, the contract is that we would pay prior to receiving. So it's a paid in advance, which is, as I understand, typical for that type of thing. However, non-typical for a municipality to prepay in advance for work.
So my understanding, we can't go over 20. Now, we're showing here 40 grand. Is that normal?
Non-typical for us, but if, if memory serves, that contract was approved by city council. This is just the, how we are dispersing the money.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Moving on.
No, we need roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mark Sapidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The only other item I have is informational, and that's to report our regular overtime payroll from November 7, 2022, through November 20 of 2022. That total is $254,788.86. That's all I have.
Any other questions of the treasurer?
No, I just want to thank you, Lisa, for, for the tax that we've done on it. I mean, I worked hard on it, so thank you.
That killed me.
Thanks, Glenn.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you too. Well, she knows she does all the work.
Okay, moving along to unfinished business. We have nothing, anyone? New business, anyone?
I just made.
Committee liaison reports?
Yeah, Mayor, just like to remind everybody that we're taking entries for the holiday decorating contest. We will be awarding the winners at the December 19 city council meeting. So you have up until December 12 to submit your entry. You could email it to myself, or drop it off here at City Hall. The forms are available on the city's website. The judging will take place between December 13 and 18, and again, prize is awarded on December 19. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? We'll begin with Ward 1, Alderman Dyke.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Verchay?
Nothing in the report.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alderwoman Gazal?
Just want to welcome Crusade Burger to Crestille. They opened about a week and a half ago. We have a lot of residents that are complimenting. We have a lot of kids from the neighborhood that they're working there, so they are very happy. So stop by and support your local businesses. And that's it, Mayor.
Alderperson Oberlin?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Sapidi?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
No, just to welcome to Don. Welcome aboard. And everybody enjoy the holiday season. Thank you.
Alderman Kuhwal?
Nothing else at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Public comment? Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city attorney, Mike, is there a need for an executive[1782.01] To our city attorney, Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
There is not.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
We have a motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Richay. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Richay.
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 7:30 PM. Thank you, and good evening.